All right, I have a couple of items. First, I'd like to introduce Dr. Tamara Cluness. Dr. Tamara Cluness is a very accomplished higher education professional. Prior to joining us here at Central Texas College, she led the Academic Affairs Division at Amarillo College during a time when the college experienced unprecedented course success and graduation rates. She has higher education state policy experience, working as a State Director for Developmental and Adult Education with the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. Dr. Cluness also taught developmental education and learning framework courses for 20 years in two and four-year institutions. She holds a PhD from Texas State University in adult professional and community education. Her accomplishments are too many to number, so you have a copy of her full bio in your packet, and I'd like to invite her at this time to give a few comments.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. To our trustees, thank you so much for allowing me just to say thank you. I'm so excited to be here. I made a list of the organization, the characteristics that I wanted in an organization for when I moved. At Central Texas College, checked off everything and then some. So I've been welcomed by the staff. I feel a part of the Central Texas College family. Thank you so much for having me. I'm looking forward to a great time with the organization, and I'm just excited to be here. It's already been a great experience for me and my family, and I can't say how happy I am to be back in the Central Texas corridor. Born and raised in Dallas, lived in Austin for 20 years, so this is a homecoming for me. So thank you so much for having me.
Welcome.
Also, on Friday, September 6th, at 8 o'clock, we will begin the tradition of an annual employee convocation to encourage our faculty and staff as we prepare for the upcoming academic year. I'll provide updates about the college, goals for the upcoming year, and we'll have a guest speaker for the event. So mark your calendar, September 6th at 8 o'clock. We'll start at 7:30 with a social.
Mr. Barton, you have a word for us about the next budget?
So you have the draft in front of you. I'll skip to some instances. This is from last year. I'll get to page five. The knowledge may have been outdated. In the tuition section up there, that was in the year, and you can bring that in March. Next page, page six. That's the change there in the individualized instruction. You get approved out of March. And then on page nine, you approved those changes to Resident Hall in March also. And then on page 12, we're into the numbers. I'm not sure much detail you're going to, but the big changes probably since your last update have been the 8% increase for hourly and the 4% for salary. And of course, I think you do have the field and non-field eliminations and positions. Hopefully, the insurance, which is budgeted at $2.3 million, will stay there and not go over. I think Larry's waiting on one more quote. And I did learn something last week when we were doing the legislative appropriations request, and that's that the co-ward may have given us the wrong appropriation number. Not sure yet, so.
What does that mean?
They gave us the wrong amount. About three or four months ago, they sent out a report, and it's going to be like 15,860. And now it looks like that could be wrong. So I'm not sure what it's going to be till probably October from where I'm from.
Do you feel it's going to be above that or below it?
They said to correct the issue, to put in what we received this year. So that's what we did to complete the report. So we just have to wait till October and see what happens. I can't see them adjusting it out a lot. Other than that, everything's pretty much the same. It leaves you with a $6.5 million transfer from the ZER, $4.5 million in capitalizations, and hopefully, we don't have to spend what we budgeted for the ADA.
Any questions? Comments?
It's going to take some time to digest this, so maybe call it here. So you said this includes an 8% increase?
For the hourly.
And that would take them from at the bottom realm of, what was that? I saw that in here. You write long emails.
Holly's going to talk about it.
Okay, I'll wait. She's probably wishing you would answer my question.
Well, I can tell you it's badly needed.
Anybody else have questions? Read and come prepared next week for the question. Thanks, Doc. Mr. Gonzalez? You have several items.
Yes, sir. I'm sure, so you might be able to hear me on the mic. So good afternoon. I'll be seeking board approval for the 50K list. And Mr. Armstrong, I just kind of wanted to share a little bit about what that 50K list is. And so the 50K list allows us to issue blanket purchasers to vendors on a list of goods and services for purchases of 50,000 or more in aggregate during the fiscal year beginning, in this case, September 1, 2024. Something I want to emphasize is that all the vendors on the 50K list are either part of a purchasing cooperative. They're either under a board-approved contract or utility service, and they were procured in accordance with our Texas statutory law or CTC policy. So in this case, it would be Policy 100 or Texas Education Code 44.11. And so with that, our recommendation will be if the administration recommends approval of the 50K list for fiscal year '24, '25, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question?
Anyone?
All right. Thanks, sir. Go to the next item.
Per CTC Board of Trustees document number 427, the CTC administration is required to develop a proposed list of sponsorships for board consideration. I won't read all the bullet points. However, if you look down towards the bottom, all right, the total budget is listed there, and then the recommendations that we're making for the board to approve sponsorships for are Business Resource Center of 30,000, CTC Foundation, and there's a designer person being the lighting of the Bell Tower Airport dedication celebration and golf tournament in the amount of $12,500, Leon Valley District of Longhorn Council, the Boy Scouts of America in the amount of $5,000, the Central Texas Association of the United States Army, AUSA, $5,000, Colleen Rotary Scholarships in the amount of $3,600, the Festival of Trees in the amount of $2,800. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of those sponsorships.
A total of $58,900.
Yes, sir. A total of $58,900.
Question?
Is there ever an opportunity to make changes in the list of?
Yes, ma'am.
Does someone, I guess a group of you probably sit together?
Yes, thank you for asking that. So we have a sponsorship committee, a group that needs, and so if there's ever a recommendation from the board, if you just want to send that to either Ms. Havens or Ms. Tomandowski, we will then put that into the consideration, and it'll go to the committee, and then they will then collate everything. That way, we can bring it to you.
I can't think of a recommendation as we speak, but I want to make sure that we support various organizations in our community, not just, because I know that some of them, the support is because of previous administrators' support of this organization, and that's fine. I wouldn't remove any of them, but I just would like to see some variation in the list every year so that all of our community benefits.
Something else to share within the board policy is 8515. So in that case, there is discretionary funds that the chancellor asks in order to sponsor anything that's under or 2,500 below. So if you need 2,500 and up, we will bring to you because that will require approval. So there is also some flex there.
That's why it's 15,900, and right above it says the budget total for 74,300, so that accommodates the lesser amount.
Yes, sir. So that's the total annual budget, but of that, 85% is the board's per view, and the other 50%.
Thanks. Question for you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've been a Boy Scout for a long time, or a Boy Scout parent and leader.
Yes, sir.
They changed their name recently. I don't remember off the top of my head, Scouting USA. If the Leon Valley District Longhorn Council has gone away from Boy Scouts of America to Scouting USA, it may not matter, but to the budgetary process, but the names have changed, I suppose.
So just as a matter of procurement, if there's a change in the vendor ID year, vendor's name, we will adjust all that to make sure from an accounting perspective, we've got that all delineated.
Yeah.
I apologize if we did not update the name.
It's a recent national level change, but I don't know off the top of my head if they have made that change.
We'll check with our local chapter and make sure that we, and I'll make a note of that, actually.
Thanks, Eric.
May I make a point of clarification for those who don't have the packet in front of them? The awards that are being recommended for approval next week, these are the result of requests that were actually made. So we didn't just compile a list of sponsorships, but these are the results of these organizations listed here reaching out to the college, and then by committee, we determined whether or not they meet the criteria, and then the committee, which is independent of the chancellor, makes the decision.
I believe that every one of these have a history.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Yeah, one of them, the Clean Rotary Scholarships, request for $3,600.
Yes, sir.
This year, Clean Rotary gave $7,800 in scholarships to CTC.
Yes, sir.
So it's a return of investment.
Absolutely.
And you can expect that, again, the next year.
Yes, sir. And they match the amount that we give, they match that. So it does. It does.
Right. So it brings eight new students in.
Yes, sir.
Which we're looking for students, so.
Yes, we are.
Each year, do these organizations come back with a new request, or?
Yes, sir.
It's not automatic.
No legacy thing.
Good question.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. You have the Impact Fire Operations Option Two year.
Yes, sir. Next Tuesday, I'll be seeking board approval to exercise Option Year Two of the Impact Fire Services Contract. And so this was originally in June 1st of 2022, and now we've already exercised Option Year One. Now we'll be seeking to exercise Option Year Two. If you're looking at it and you see, you're like, wait a minute, has there been a gap? Well, to the 50K list. The 50K list operates also as a level of redundancy, and in that redundancy, we actually have it approved. However, just as a matter of, I guess, proof and operation, we still bring things for the board to approve. So in this case, Impact Fire, or make sure I get my name right, Impact Fire, we'll be looking at an amount not to exceed 250,000 per year. We bring that here regardless. We just don't leave it up to the 50K.
Questions? Next item is a request for qualification, or RFQ, for Architectural Design Services.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The current contract with PBK for campus architectural designs expired. They did complete all the work that we had related to the ADA piece of it. We went ahead and did an RFQ, a request for qualifications, that was issued within our Texas statutes, and again, we're governed under 44.031, as well as Government Code 2269. I'll just say edsec for all those that follow and the folly. The proposals we received were from five companies. Of the five, three were selected for onsite interviews, and a committee was formed in order to evaluate those presentations and interviews. Of the three, Fluger was the firm that was chosen, is identified. And so what I'll be seeking next week is to issue a contract to Fluger for an initial base term of one year, beginning September 1st, 2024, with four one-year renewal options, not to exceed five years, and not to exceed 750,000 per year.
Questions? Say none? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Murphy? The ever-exciting insurance this year.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Chancellor, members of the board. This afternoon, I'll be discussing our requests next week for approval of multiple lines of insurance with our affiliates, starting with Alliant. Alliant covers our fiduciary liability coverage, airport liability, aviation hall liability, law enforcement, professional liability, terrorism coverage policies. Fiduciary liability was no change from last year, and that renewal policy will be at $29,718. Our airport liability also had no change, which will remain at $5,915 for that annual policy. Our aviation hall liability actually reduced by $7,006, and this was due to the new aircraft and selling of several older aircraft. But that policy will be at $121,216. Our law enforcement liability decreased by $1,138.67, and that was due to the lowering of the number of exposures. So that policy will be at $10,942.12. And then because we have aircraft, we have to have terrorism coverage, and that policy is at $175. So next week, I'll be requesting your approval to approve services with Alliant at $167,966.12.
Any questions?
Saving money. Said we're saving money.
Thank you, sir. Next item you have is for the Safety Center, Safety and Security.
No, no.
Oh, you have three. Okay, you have three on there. Excuse me.
So with AJG.
You hesitated. That's why. I'm sorry.
Next week, we'll be requesting approval with them.
AJG covers our international coverage, our United Educators General Liability, Educators' Liability, and Legal Liability, Crime Insurance, Automotive Insurance, Pollution Liability, Active Shooter Coverage, and Workers' Compensation. This policy did increase by $11,460, and I'll go into that a little bit here in a few minutes as to why. Our international coverage, that remains no change at $2,500. Our United Educators General Educators and Legal Liability, that policy changed to $237,295. That was a $27,922 increase. And reason being is our policy limit, we changed that from $5 million to $10 million to be able to cover, to provide more of a safety net for the institution in the event that someone were to take out a claim against CTC. With the increase in claims, payouts, and arbitration and other things have increased over the last several years, and we want to make sure that we had a safety net there for the institution with our carriers. When we look at crime insurance, crime insurance, that decreased by $329, and that policy is We have actually a very safe campus, and that played a big portion into that decrease. Automotive insurance, that increased by $1,103. That policy will be $57,562, and that played a part in the number of claims in the area, hail damage, and other increases within our region. When we look at our pollution liability, that policy, we saved, our biggest savings there with that one, it decreased by $17,440. Overall, next year, our policy will, excuse me, our policy will be $164,000, I'm sorry, it will be $18,583 over next year. Then our active shooter coverage, that one will be $11,696.28, which was no change there. And workers' compensation, we also saw a decrease there. Next year, that policy will be $164,579. Any questions?
Anybody have questions? No, big and please, watch. Recommendation.
And the final one with BKCW. Central Texas College District has multiple lines of insurance with BKCW. As we know, these policies renew on September 1st. Travelers Group is our current commercial property carrier and will only cover us up to $100 million, which forced us last year to go out and get a second line of insurance, as most of you may recall, for an additional $100 million in property valuation, which was again secured through BKCW through their affiliate Amwinds Bermuda. This will bring our total property coverage to $200 million, and CTC will self-insure to remain in $124 million in property valuation. Now, when we look at the first line through Travelers, that policy, as the first $100 million, that's the line that covers the most risk, and if you pay for that, you'll have a higher premium. That premium for the year will be $1,115,929. Our second line through Amwinds for the additional $100 million, that policy will be $398,582. When we look at our gun range coverage, that remains unchanged at, I'm sorry, that increased by $436.82, which that policy will be renewing at $5,140.60. Overall, our insurance currently for all of these affiliates remaining under the $2.3 million, coming in at $2.2 million.
Questions?
Questions? Now you have to audit.
From April 2015 to August 20, from April 2024 to August 2024, CTC conducted the Texas School Safety Center Safety and Security Audit, as required by Texas Education Code 37.108. And this audit period was from 2021 to 2024 audit cycle. Although the college conducted the formal audit during this time, CTCD's commitment to safety and security is paramount, and we continually, continuously looking for ways to improve the safety and security of our campus. The Risk Management Department conducted the audit with substantial input from campus administration, campus police, facilities and construction, information technology, and several other departments on campus, highlighting our, the integral role these departments play in the safety and security of our campus. CTC is unwavering in its commitment to providing a secure and safe learning and working environment for all students, faculty, staff, and visitors. Ongoing rigorous evaluations and enhancements in safety and security measures will always remain our top priority. And during this audit, we got to talk to students as well as faculty and staff, getting their input on how they feel about our campus, and the overall feel is that this is a safe, welcoming environment.
Questions?
Questions, anyone? Thank you, sir. Ms. Jordan? Review of compensation schedules.
Last month, we had a couple different conversations about employees and employee compensation. And then frankly, to my friend Doug Barton, he set it up pretty nicely for me to talk a little bit more about employee compensation. We've had some struggles, as I've shared last month, with our employee compensation rates. We fall short with our wages, and we have a, our hourly folks, we, you know, I often talk about how amazing our employees are, our hourly folks. The starting salary for our hourly folks is $943, which is very low in comparison to our surrounding areas. And because of our lower wages, we've really struggled to hire some folks. We've got amazing employees behind me, and I'm so very thankful for all the employees that we have. This year was challenging for us because we did implement some layoffs, and that meant that a number of our employees behind us had to do a little bit more. And our next request is to increase those pay scales. And as Mr. Barton shared, part of the budget that you will receive next week will include a request for 8% increase to our hourly pay scale, and then 4% for our other three pay scales. And we have a salary pay scale, a faculty pay scale, and then an adjunct pay scale. So we're requesting an increase to all four of those scales. And that is to help us become a little bit more competitive with our rates. I would ask that we continue to review and consider increases in the future, because even with this increase, you're looking at, you know, I shared our hourly folks, the lowest rate is $943. With an 8% increase, that would get us to $10.18 an hour, which is, I still feel like we've got a little ways to go, but an 8% increase for them and a 4% for everybody else would definitely help us get there.
Question? Holly, what the, do you know what the total increase, should that be approved?
Yes, the total amount, or the, yes, the total cost. It's, it's almost, it's 1.881,000, 1,881. So.
Okay. So there may be a series of questions here, and I apologize in advance, okay?
Okay, that's great.
So there's like 45 employees that make $943 an hour? Is that about right?
There is, I think I said there's around 30 or 25, 30 or so.
Okay. $943 is, in my, in my view, I don't even pay employees that low, okay? Even for labor, not skilled labor. What is the, do you know the minimum that Copper's Cove pays its employees?
Or Colleen?
Oh, Colleen, I can tell you. Let's see.
I have a whole list here. I can read it off real quick.
Yeah. And I've got some comparison.
KISD manual labor is $11.76, that's starting. CCSD groundskeeper is $12, a bust 80 is $10. Belton ISD is $15. HEB is $14.72. McDonald's is $11.42. Chick-fil-A is $15.84. Walmart's $12.26, and Lowe's is $12.10.
That's what the numbers are.
That's the starting wage.
Thanks, Eric.
That's what I was looking for. I mean, we were paying our full-time employees $943 an hour, right? Or those few people, right?
Yes, yes.
I know, like, Whataburger starts at 13 bucks an hour, okay? We're a college, and we should pay our employees adequately as a college. And I know I was the dissenting vote on doing a voter approval, right? It is what it is, but I think we should consider a pay raise for these, for our employees, because they're not your employees, they're our employees, because we're taxpayers in this city, cities, because I think, believe there's five cities that, that we cover as CTC. And we should compensate that, and we're supposed to be the model for people to look at. So. So maybe we need to look at, put together some type of package to go before voters and elevate that up to a level that, to, so we can keep our employees here. Our instructors are the people that make this college work. And I, I would say fourteen or fifteen dollars an hour to start and keep them there and then adequately go up as time, like when I was at Copper's Cove, we, we set before I left, it was like twenty seventeen or something like that, we set us up to keep our wages within ninety-five percent of the area around us. And so we could keep employees employed in the city down there. Why can't we do the same thing here? I mean, nine forty-three an hour, that's, there, I'm surprised anyone still works here making nine forty-three an hour, even at ten eighteen an hour. We, we need to put something together and bring that up to a, a rate that we can actually keep people employed here. And from what you were saying in your email and, and what we all have experienced around here, we're losing employees, you, thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent turnover rate every year. Can't keep up with that.
Thank you for recognizing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
But I think fourteen or fifteen dollars an hour to start is where we need to be looking at. And that would, I know that would have to go before the voters. And let's see what they want to do for our college and go from there.
I have an alter proposal to what has been presented. You'll pass those over, you know, give Ms. Jordan a, a copy of everything and give that her, you can pass them out to the audience. And my problem is this. A lot of people start out in the world at the lower wage, but they don't always stay there. But that lower wage has got to be something that'll be able to put bread and butter on the table. And my proposal is that we grant a pay increase for this year, knowing this is going to have to come out of reserves, by the way. And you can't keep that up forever, so we got to generate some income. And taxes or tuition, and right now, our tuition is, is about where it ought to be. But I'm proposing eleven point six percent to the hourly, a four percent to faculty, two-point-five percent to salary, and a three percent to adjuncts. Now, why am I saying that? Based on inflation and based on what social security is considering, they're considering a two-point-five to two-point-seven percent increase for next year. And that basically doesn't even take care of the price increases that you've seen at HEB in the past three years. I mean, everything has gone up exponentially and it's, it's very difficult for some families to see as me. If you go talk to food care center people, they've got more people going there now than they've ever had in their history. So we ought to do better by employees. But I don't believe it's just a slice and give everybody the same percent because there's different reasons for being in the facility that you are. A professor, someone's got a PhD that teaches our classes, you've got to recognize that they went a long way to get there. The adjunct faculty, we couldn't do without them, but historically, and having been an adjunct faculty, I say this from the bottom of my heart, we never treated them right. It was always crumbs. So we need to take a look at how we treat those people because they're very important to us. Our salary employees have got a guaranteed salary every month and I don't see any reason not to keep them at that inflation rate at least. So that's my proposal. We look at it from the standpoint of what's fair to everybody, not just always give the money to the landed gentry because sometimes they don't really need it. But the little guy down there, yeah, they need it. Now, you look at our campus, it's a beautiful campus. I enjoy it every time I come out here and I come out here frequently. But we've got a lot of grass to cut and if we don't keep it cut, we don't keep those bushes watered, it's going to turn like, look like a desert around here. And we're going to replace all the grass with rocks, I hope not. So, yeah, we got to honor those people. We've got to make it good for them so they want to work for us and they want to stay here and work for us. Because one of the problems we have, if you get a new employee, it takes at least three to six months for them to get up to speed. And if we lose them in that time, we got to start over again and that's, that costs money.
Rex, do I presume that you're going to present this as an amendment to the?
I'm asking Holly Jordan, her wisdom and experience to take a look at it and come back to us with either the same proposal she's offering today or modify it as the case may be. That's all I'm asking. Take a look at it, that's all I'm asking.
And sir, I greatly appreciate your research. Can you tell me, I'm sure you've got this number in your head, for the eleven point six percent increase, what would that be to the, I don't have my phone, to the nine forty-three?
It comes out to be eleven dollars and eighteen cents an hour.
So then that would be our lowest starting salary.
A little bit more than what you suggested, but still, still not a whole lot.
It's, it's a good start. Getting us closer. Okay?
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I do have a question. I, I want to make sure we have apples and apples and oranges and oranges. Are there any non-wage benefits to our personnel as opposed to personnel from Chick-fil-A and Whataburger and all these other locations that we haven't accounted for?
We, we do have phenomenal benefits, full, what we call state health insurance benefits, and that's paid, for, every employee will pay a hundred percent of that premium and per month is over six hundred dollars that we pay for these employees. So health insurance, I don't know if there's a better program out there than what, than what we have.
That's part of the calculus then, is, you know, I, I know our numbers and I'm not going to disagree that our folks need more wages, but in the overall cost of employment, we need to know what the apples are, what the oranges are.
Even with a, a pay increase, we need to build in a fifty percent, a fifty, fifty, fifteen percent increase for our retirement plans that we offer. So that would be an additional expense to the pay increase.
Right, so, you know, one leads to the other. You increase the pay, but it's a proportionality that it's going to cause the other to increase too, and we kind of, kind of balance the funds to be able to do that.
So, and then we have a great league, you know, we have the holidays and vacation time, but quite frankly, it gets to the point where that league is great, but it doesn't put food on the table.
Right, right.
So, that's, that's where we, that's where we are.
All right, good, good question. Anyone else? Comments? Healthy discussion, very good. Thank you, thank you, Holly, appreciate it.
So when, when you do the one for General Weaver, can you do one based on the fourteen percent, what, what it would, what it would look like?
Fourteen percent?
Yeah. I mean, not, not fourteen percent, fourteen dollars an hour.
Oh.
As a minimum. Okay.
No question. I would be remiss in not mentioning this, I don't know what this will do to Mr. Barton in his budget. I, I definitely am very receptive to it, but we need to, we're, we're knocking on the, close out of this whole year.
Two of you need to agree to a recommendation that, that is clear.
Because he has it loaded.
Pretty much, basically. You want, you want an option, three budgets?
No, I don't think so. I would recommend that, given what Holly has heard, the discussion here, that she'd come with an adjusted recommendation that, that you have factored in. Then if, then if we need, if there's, if there's not an agreement that her summation of the discussion that she's heard fits everybody's bill, then we would have a debate about the, the amount. But I would, I would recommend she finalize what you heard, put it into numbers that you're comfortable with, and you filter them into the, into the budget, and then the, the budget reflects her numbers. And if there's something more, if there's fourteen dollars or eleven dollars or no change in, in the recommendation, then we would have that debate about amending. Does that make sense? Does that make sense, everybody here?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Work to be done.
You're going to need to approve something.
Yeah, 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 right. If you bring us, if you bring us your recommendation of the budget that includes her recommendations to you, we will either approve that or we will amend it by, by vote here. That's just one person of you. Thank you, Holly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
About a fifty percent increase.
Just a comment.
Yes, I.
From nine to fourteen?
If we don't, we have to do something. We can't continue to, to sit here and talk about increasing the sal, the salaries, particularly of the hourly waged individuals. If you do nothing, a year from now, we're going to have the same conversation, and that just puts us further and further behind. Whatever we arrive at will at least have moved us forward, so the next year, we can look at it again and again. And it should be an ongoing situation. This was my job for twenty-five years, so I know a little bit about the process, but it's something, Holly, I would look to you and Dr. Carter to come to us and say, even if we make no change, even if we don't approve it, we need to always be looking at the staff's salaries every year. I mean, it's just, it's hard, it will be difficult, I would think, to put together a budget unless you did look at them, particularly when we're already functioning at a deficit. So I, I applaud you and, and Rex, I really appreciate the work you've done to bring this before us. It is definitely something we can use in this process. So thank you for working, doing, going ahead and doing that. But I just, I don't want to be sitting here having this same conversation next year. I want a different one.
Okay. Thank you.
May, may I add something? General Weaver, I so appreciate you taking the time to do that. It, it speaks well, I was just sharing with Dr. Kuhn is that we have a board who is engaged and, and is concerned. And so I appreciate you all allowing us to have this conversation so that they can hear for themselves how much you care. I would say to the, what, what you've proposed, which is just absolutely amazing, I'd like for Holly to make a little bit of distinction with regard to the hourly scale and the salary because I think the assumption is that the hourly scale is all lower level work and somehow the salary is admin. So when I see a two-point-five percent proposed for salary, we have some folks that are on a, just by classification of their job, who are on the, the salary scale, who could potentially make less than someone on the hourly if it's a skilled job that doesn't necessarily require supervision. So what you may see is a slight tweak, but I wanted to make sure everyone understood that. Okay?
Good point.
Thank you.
You may remember that I, I asked you, when you come back to this board, you tell me there are twenty-seven people, not thirty-five and not twenty. If it's twenty-seven, that's the number I want to hear. I don't, I don't, I don't do that well, that sliding, I mean, you know, oh, it might be, that's not who I am. So I need to hear the exact number, so you, you really have some work to do.
Okay, that's fine, I can do it.
It's a good thing she's back sickly.
Challenge accepted, thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
You can do it.
Next item on the agenda is the chancellor's travel schedule.
Okay. I just wanted to get ahead of the, typically, I think we bring this in September, so I just wanted to get out in front of it for the first quarter, first half of the, the school year. Those are all pretty standard with regard to the AUSA Conference, Texas Pathways, Workforce Solutions, the monthly meeting will actually be in Austin, we're going to do a site visit versus here in Colleen, and then the annual workforce conference, I added that this year. I didn't get to go last year because there was a conflict with SACS, but as you know, I serve on the Workforce Solutions Board, so I'd really like to attend. And then, of course, there's the standard SAC COC and the, and the coordinating board leadership conferences, and then CCME, our military partners. I will tell you, this agenda is being, I mean, this schedule, schedule is being amended because as Dr. Garrett pointed out to me for the tat quarterly meeting, SACS will be here, she reminded me, so I, I didn't keep that in mind. So you can scratch that one. I, I will not be going to Tyler. I'm not upset about it, but. So that's what we'll present next week for your approval.
Thank you, ma'am. General Weaver, you have a tax reinvestment zone report.
Yes, I do, sir. The, last Thursday, the Colleen Tax Reinvestment Zone Number Two met and I'll give you the, pass them down, please, to all the trustees. The balance sheet that ended thirty September twenty twenty-three, total assets were two-hundred and, two million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five. Of that, add liability to sixty-five thousand, sixty-three dollars, and restricted for capital projects was two hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. Committed for capital projects is fourteen thousand, thirty dollars, and unassigned fund balance was two million, eight, two thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So the fund balance is good. If you flip it over on the bike, you see the proposed budget for the period of one October through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Total revenues expected, one million, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and nine, nine hundred and sixty dollars, that's the tax investment from the different entities that are involved in this, which were Bell County and City Colleen and Central Texas College District. Of that, the commitments for the year right now of thirty thousand dollars for professional services, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a placeholder for grants for exterior and interior improvements in the overlay district, and five hundred thousand for strategic land acquisition and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the North Colleen Grocery Store site development. Historically, North Colleen has been under-service by grocery store since the downtown HEB closed several years ago. And we've been trying to get a grocery store interested in coming in and occupying a side of the old Thirty-Eighth State Theater across from Colleen High School. That's the area we're talking about. And it's, it's, it's really difficult to, to explain why we can't get a vendor to come in, but over the time, we've had some problems with investments, we're challenged with expansion and some people worry about climbing that area. So no vendor wants to come forward and very cavalier, both HEB and Walmart have said, well, people come to our store, so we don't, we don't see any sense in sending our money out there and creating a new store. So that's what you're up against. But we haven't given up yet, we're still out there with people trying to help. There's two areas, the Black Chamber of Commerce is trying to get involved in helping with this, and there's another coalition, a former football player, I don't name any names, but is trying to help and also, Brooks Brothers has been looked at and then, they're kind of sort of maybe, you know? So anyway, we're working on it. So just so you'll know, the tax reinvestment zone is still there and we're, we're trying our best to help develop with Colleen.
And we're players in there.
I'm the only one that's original member of that organization. Everybody else has died or gone to Fort Sill, I don't know.
Next item on the agenda is an executive session to discuss the performance evaluations that the board is responsible for. Our timeout is at one fifty and we will bring a rest report back at the conclusion of that. The board members, take your envelopes.
Can you get a picture of that one? We had all the way to go.
The mic is on.
Thank you for your patience. Time back in is 2:28. There's no recommendations for the board. Besides, this is a workshop. We wouldn't have anything to vote on to begin with. Last item is asking board members for any recommendations on topics for future agenda items. Ms. Colley?
We have plenty of topics.
Sufficient topics.
Just on that stuff we were all discussing about with the budget?
First now, yeah.
Yeah.
I have none. The reminder that you've already heard is the public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, the 27th at 12:30 and board meeting on the 27th at 1:00 p.m.